Good, how are you? Good, good, good.
All right, welcome to our March monthly board meeting. I'd like to welcome you all tonight. I'll call this meeting to order if you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is roll call. Mike Knoll. Russ is absent. John O'Hare is absent. Dennis.
Here.
John Maxey.
Here.
Amy.
Here.
And I am here. Next on our agenda is the Student Highlight, which is our highlight of the night. We do enjoy that. And we have one student from each of the buildings nominated by a teacher. And along with their certificates that they will receive, they will also get a Student of the Month certificate from Jersey Mike's out of Fort Grashit for two regular subs, two chips, and 22-ounce drinks. So we want to thank Jersey Mike's and Fort Grashit for supplying those certificates to our Students of the Month. So we're going to start with the high school. Yes. Yes, absolutely. All right. Mrs. Murray, Pioneer High School.
Welcome, everyone. Pioneer High School Student of the Month is Navey Kekovich. Navey was very active in helping our preschoolers making their gingerbread houses this Christmas. She's a hard worker, has a positive attitude. She's a leader in our class, and she promotes that positive behavior in our classroom. She's working hard towards that high school diploma, and we are very proud of Navey. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Our next Student of the Month comes from Frostick Elementary.
Good evening. At this time, I want to call up Mrs. Levitt to talk about Frostick's March Student of the Month.
All right, I'm going to read it because I'm not good at speaking. But hello, my name is Kelsey Levitt, and I teach fourth grade at Frostick Elementary. And I'm super excited tonight to introduce you to Frostick Student of the Month, fourth grader Michael Bell. Come on up, Michael. Get to hang out with me so I'm not up here with just Mr. Bartel tonight. I've had the pleasure of teaching Michael this year and seeing all of his amazing qualities. There's lots of them, so I'm just going to touch on a couple. So first and foremost, Michael is an extremely kind student. I have witnessed him many times go out of his way to help somebody. So for example, the one day somebody dropped something in the hallway, and it was just a random student, nobody in our class, and he went down, picked it up, and just went about, you know, it was normal, didn't skip a beat at all. He goes out of his way to also help in the classroom as well. Michael is also an extremely hard-working student. He has worked so hard all year to continue giving his best effort when it comes to reading, math, writing, anything at all. And it is truly noticed. Michael is not the type of student to give up one bit. And he continues to push himself even when he might not enjoy what he has to do. Like homework. Maybe a little spelling. Right? Lastly, Michael has other qualities that make him a great student. He participates in our class discussions. He's respectful. He completes all his work, and the list goes on. I am so proud of Michael for all that he has accomplished so far this year, and I know he will continue to do amazing things throughout his future. So he truly deserves this. Way to go, Michael. You're welcome. No, it's me.
You get to get in, it's your...
Congratulations. Our next Student of the Month comes from Meyer Elementary.
At this time, I'd like to call up Ms. Alyssa Wilson to introduce our March Student of the Month.
Thank you very much. Riley, come join me over here. All right, well, I have the pleasure of standing beside Riley Keddie. I pronounce her last name wrong every single day, and she corrects me every single day. She was new to our district this school year, and she found her place as a pioneer very quickly. She is kind, responsible, and always is ready to learn. She is both an outstanding student and a great friend to her classmates. If you are looking for that role model student, I mean person, Riley Keddie is your person. Congratulations, honey.
Congratulations. Our next Student of the Month comes from the middle school.
Would like to invite Mrs. Cunningham up to present the Crosslex Middle School Student of the Month. Emmeline, you can come up too.
The middle school student of the month is Emmeline Wing. I am her math teacher. She started this year out showing that she was very capable. And for me, a positive role model, great student, is one who overcomes some challenges. We had a little bit of accountability challenges for a short time. And collaborating with home, she has completely turned it around and is excelling to her capabilities in the classroom. She is friendly, kind. When I told my own child that I was coming here to present this award, she said, oh, good. She's so nice to me in PE. And I can set her anywhere in the classroom, next to anyone. Students that excel, students that struggle, students that have problems sitting by others at times. And she is more than willing to help, always a great attitude, bubbly, and just very well-deserving. Congratulations, Emma.
Congratulations. And our last Student of the Month comes from the high school. I would like to invite outstanding teacher Michelle Phillips up to introduce our outstanding Student of the Month.
All right, Tanner, come on up. We kind of planned this outfit match today. SAD's doing an event this week for all the safe driving, and so red stuff. Look, our Student of the Month participates in the silliest stuff and important stuff. So I am an English teacher at the high school, Michelle Phillips, and I am so happy to have Tanner here with me today. Tanner has stood out to me for a very long time. In fact, I was his coach in middle school track. And I remember him being a leader then, and it has carried over into the classroom. Some things that stand out is not just his positive attitude, his willingness to work, but his leadership. So anytime there's, I mean, it doesn't matter the task, whether it just be discussion and no hands are coming up, you know, Tanner's there, ready, participating, present in mind and body. That means a lot because he's in my first hour now. And that's, we've got like 31 sleepers in there. So it's really, it's just been refreshing to have, to see Tanner on the academic side of things after seeing him as an athlete. And I've appreciated having him in my class. And I, he also kind of won me over during Research Week when he said he wants to be a teacher. So I hope this doesn't change anything, but I'm really proud of you, Tanner. And keep up the hard work.
Congratulations. Congratulations to all the Students of the Month, and congratulations to the parents and families who help support these children. And thank you for sharing your children with us. Next on our agenda is audience comment. Nope, okay. And next, we will need to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Moved by Mike and support by John to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is the superintendent's report. Collette, Mrs. Moody?
Well, good evening, everyone. It's been a busy month filled with so many positive events. First off, I'd like to congratulate all of our Students of the Month. We're very proud of each of them, and we want to just say again, we're thanking Jersey Mike's for their donation and supporting our students. Kindergarten roundup was held today at both Frostick and Meyer. I was able to get around to both buildings and meet some of our new little pioneers and their families. We had a good turnout, and I will get numbers to the board later this week when we see what that's looking like. But it was a fun event. The students were there signing like they were doing a sports signing, and they're signing for kindergarten. So that was exciting to see and hard to believe. But we're welcoming our class of 2036. So how about that? If you have a child who turned five by September 1st, call or stop in at either Frostick or Meyer, pick up a packet for registration. You can also access the registration packet on the district website at crosslex.org. March has also been full of activities. For March is Reading Month, so lots of fun things at the elementary buildings with guest readers, fun spirit dress-up days. And last week, they both hosted their family reading night events. Winter sports season has finished up, and overall, I feel like we had a really impressive season. Every time we turned around, it felt like another team was either going to the next level or breaking a new record. It was impressive to see. So we are proud of all of the teams, and they should be proud of their accomplishments as well. Band also had an impressive competition season, and they're going to be performing a chamber music concert tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM in the high school competition gym. So hopefully, we can see you out there. If you weren't able to attend the middle school drama production the first weekend in March, they did an outstanding job with Music Man Junior. And the high school drama club will be presenting Mama Mia coming up in the last weekend of April, so the 27th through the 30th. Should be a great musical. Friday of this week is a half-day. We'll be monitoring student attendance for each building. As a district overall average, we need to see a 75% attendance in order for it to count as a day. And then next week is spring break. So that's all I have for my superintendent's report tonight. Mr. Wood, I think you're up next.
Thank you, Ms. Moody. Yeah, this is an exciting and busy time of year. We've got state testing coming up right around the corner after spring break. Kind of a challenging time of year as we're looking ahead to next year, starting to plan some things, but also still have a lot to do yet this year. So busy and exciting times. We wanted to continue to keep the board updated as far as staffing needs within the district. At the high school, we have posted and interviewed for the open math position, but unfortunately, we're not able to fill that position. We have reposted, and we'll hopefully be able to fill that position soon. We were able to fill the open subposition for the remainder of that school year with a math-certified teacher. So at least we made one step in the right direction there. And she is all set to start after spring break. At the middle school, Alicia Torres has filled the open secretarial position. And we're looking better at Frostick and Meyer, close to full strength with one staff member out on maternity leave still. So we're getting there. We did want to provide the board with an update on our early college or CL5 program. A little bit of background on our CL5 program. CL5 started in 2010 with approximately 50 students. The goal of the program was for students to earn an associate's degree by taking college classes, their junior, senior, and then their fifth year. The district pays for all tuition costs and recently even started paying for books needed for classes. We also partner with Blue Water Middle College to provide support and resources while the students are on SC4's campus. Unfortunately, over the past few years, our numbers, which peaked at 73 in 2018, have been declining, and we witnessed an increase in the number of students withdrawing from the program, particularly in their fifth year, and an increase in failed classes. We've also witnessed, and this isn't a bad thing, as the last two were there, but we've saw an increase in the number of students dual-enrolling. So fewer students going into our early college or CL5 program, more students dual-enrolling. With these declining numbers, we did meet earlier this year. Our team went down to SC4 and met with their team to discuss, you know, kind of where our program is at, the direction, you know, kind of what we're hoping for, and kind of just set the parameters and moving forward of what we're looking for. At the meeting, we decided to look for our next year, so '23-'24, after our annual parent or community meeting, to see where our numbers would be and what the interest is for the incoming juniors. At the start of this school year, we had 14 enrolled as third-year students, our fifth year of high school. We had 11 enrolled as second-year current seniors and seven starting the program current juniors this year. This low number of enrolling students triggered that conversation with SC4 earlier this year. Classes in their junior year are taught at the high school. So it makes it difficult when our numbers are that low. We always struggle to get a professor up this way. And then when the class numbers are that low, SC4 doesn't like to run classes when they're that low. So they made an exception, basically, with us to run our juniors here this year. And then after our meeting with families interested in the program for, to start next school year, we anticipated only having four or five juniors eligible to start the program next year. And with numbers this low, you know, SC4 is not going to continue to run those classes. So unfortunately, at this point, we feel we're unable to continue to offer the early college program. Those juniors that were interested in the early college program, we've met, we've talked with them to discuss their post-secondary options and planning so they, you know, make sure that all their needs are being met. We do continue to plan to support our current juniors and seniors in the program. We plan on continuing to offer the program at and with supports from Blue Water Middle College in our partnership with SC4. So we just wanted to provide an update on that as far as just, you know, low numbers and really unable to continue the program at this point. We did want to, we do have some good news. So that's not great news, but we do have some good news. We did receive notifications on three grants that we had applied for. Our 104H grant, which is designed to help cover the costs associated with our benchmark testing in grades K8, so our NWA testing. The grant was awarded was $12.50 per student, and we anticipate that amount being around $14,900. The state also is providing financial assistance for schools designated as TSI. We applied and received a $20,000 grant for that. And the money is designed to support programming and training to help offset those costs to help us get off that TSI designation list. And finally, we're excited to announce that we had previously applied for the 98C grant, which has been awarded a little over $100,000, $100,223. And this money is earmarked for expenses associated with learning loss. We are required to have a learning loss plan, which was submitted and posted and presented to the board in October of this year. That details kind of what we would spend that money on. Later in the board meeting, I'll be sharing with the board the sex advisory update and some recommendations. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Keith?
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to give a quick update on our early childcare grants that we received. We just, the district just passed a window for reporting. If you go by Geiger, you'll notice the new playground being installed as we speak. Not right now, but today, they were out there. That's due to this grant that we received. It was a huge boost to our early childhood program. So between Geiger and Meyer, we'll get to see a lot of improvements in those two programs. Additionally, we have another window that's going to be coming up June 30 of this year. So we'll have to have any additional funds spent that target those. And we're going to target Geiger mostly with some HVAC things, some repairs, and get that building ready to go for the anticipated expansion, potentially of our early childhood program at the state level. Also, excess fund balance at the food service, I wanted to highlight that too. Been working closely with Ms. Peters and Chartwell's to consider purchasing a high school serving line. Right now, we have a vendor that's helping us with the RFP process. However, I've asked Ms. Peters to go back and take a look at some different manufacturers to see if we can get some more preferential pricing and consistency throughout the district. So we currently have Duke, a vendor Duke, in a couple of our buildings, and she's really satisfied with that product. We had priced out a different vendor. So we're just trying to get some apples-to-apples comparison before we go out to that bid process. But this is part of the plan to get the excess fund balance spent down. So we're on track for that by the end of this fiscal year as well. Additionally, I hope to have, bring to the board for April's meeting, where every year, we have to go out with our annual renewal of our contract with Chartwell's. So I'm working with Ashley's boss right now, and she's new to this process. So we have a meeting scheduled this Wednesday to go over that, to get that in line so that it can be brought to the board for approval. Basically, we're in a multi-year contract, but annually, the state requires a renewal for a food service manager. So that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any district staff reports tonight? Rachel? Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of quick updates. We just had the infrared electrical survey conducted at the high school, and I received that report late this afternoon. I haven't gotten a chance to go through all of it, but I will be soon with my team and then sharing that report and recommendations from Hartford Steam Boiler with Ms. Moody and the rest of the administrators. And we're just gearing up and getting ready for next week's cleaning and maintenance while everyone's gone. And that's it.
All right. Thank you. And Mrs. Moody has the student representative report tonight?
Since Robert was unable to be here, he shared his report with me so I could share it with you. He said, "Good evening, everyone. With the start of spring sports and the preparation of standardized testing ahead, students have been working hard before the upcoming spring break. In the high school, students have embodied high achievement. Members of the cheer team, wrestling, bowling, and girls' powerlifting competed at the state level this month. The band received a Division One rating at districts, so they will be continuing at the state level as well. SAD is continuing their efforts to raise awareness about the dangers of distracted driving. This week, the club is sponsoring a Spirit Week that will advocate for safer driving habits among students and members of the community. The Spirit Week is one of their major initiatives this year for their Students for a Safer Drive campaign sponsored by Ford Motor Company. Students are encouraged to take part in dress-up days to show their support for the cause. By the end of the week, SAD hopes that students will form better driving habits that will spread in the community. Spring sports are now underway with girls' tennis, girls' soccer, girls' softball, track, boys' track, and golf. On behalf of the student body, I wish everyone a happy spring break. Thank you."
Thank you, Robert. No old business. Under new business, where to approve the school calendar for 2023-2024?
The district has an agreement, just for some background information, with the CLA, and the board will need to approve. We had worked together and discussed different needs in the calendar, and those have been shared out previously in a board note. And you have a copy of the signed and dated calendar that's being recommended tonight. It was signed by the union and administration on 2/21/23. After signing, I shared that with you this last Friday. We noticed that there was a 22 and a 23 that really needed to match. So we, we had a typo on there, so we fixed that and then re-signed it on 3/15/23. So you'll see the updated one that was shared with you in your pass board note.
Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the school calendar for the 2023-2024 school year.
Support.
Moved by Amy and support by Mike to approve the school calendar for the 2023-2024 school year. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is to approve the appointment of Dennis Collins, a resident of Fremont Township for a four-year term, which will expire December 31, 2026, to the Aiken Library Board as required by the district library agreement.
This has been a longstanding agreement with the library. I reached out to them just to get some additional background information. Their library board actually has eight members, four of which live within the Crawswell city limits. And so the Crawswell City Council votes on those four, and then the other four come from the townships that fall within the district. So the school district then gets a recommendation for someone who is interested in serving on that board and send us their recommendation to approve their recommendation.
Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Dennis Collins for a four-year term, which will expire December 31, 2026, to the Aiken Library Board as required by the district library agreement.
Support? Anyone? I guess I can do that. I'll support that. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Next to us is to receive the presentation from the Sex Ed Supervisor, Kyle Wood, on proposed revision of the Sex Ed curriculum for the 2023, 2024, and discuss the Sex Ed Curriculum Michigan Model for 2023, 2024. So, Mr. Wood, you're up. That was a mouthful.
Yeah, thank you, President Gordon. So we had our, we want to present to the Board tonight just basically some legal updates with the Sex Ed Advisory Board, the process that got us to this point, and then just some updates that we're working on, as well as one recommendation. So one of the first things you'll notice as we start the presentation here, one of the legal requirements, and there's basically three pages of legal requirements for this Advisory Board, the big one is we have to have parents who are not employed by the district as the majority of the Advisory Board. So I'm the chair, Ms. Rep has to be a parent co-chair, and then you can see we've got Gianni Carli, who's the Sex Ed Supervisor, and then we've got representation at, you know, the different levels throughout the district. And again, large number of parents, it was a pretty, pretty good-sized group, and then we also wanted a male and female student representative, so we've got a couple of students on for that as well. So just some background. MDE requires that the Sex Ed Advisory Board meet every two years, so our last one was in 2021. We met on March 6th, and we basically wanted to review or accomplish the following tasks. So we went through with the committee and reviewed all the legal obligations. They received a copy of this information. And then the practices for HIV, STI, and sex education in Michigan public schools. So one of the big things is we have to teach HIV/AIDS education at each level. So in other words, we have to do it at the elementary, the middle, and the high, and our current practices have that covered. And then we wanted to discuss the district K-12 sex education programming currently in place. So at the meeting, on the agenda, we had highlights from what's covered in the elementary, what's covered in fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, eighth grade, and then ninth grade health class. So just some teacher qualifications for instruction. Anyone that does the HIV/AIDS training has to have that completed training, and that is done, we work with Tracy Robinson, our regional coordinator, through Tuscola ISD, and all of our teachers who teach that HIV/AIDS have had that training. And then anyone who teaches the full sex education curriculum, and I did bring the Michigan model for middle school and high school, if anyone wants to take a look at it. The teachers who teach that, they are required to have that health, health, physical education, rec and dance, or the family and consumer science endorsement. So they're required to have a little more to teach the full sex education curriculum. Okay? And as I said, all the teachers have those training and proper credentials to be teaching this, this material. So one of the big parts about the Sex Ed Advisory Board and how we handle sex education in the district, we have to communicate with parents, and we are an opt-in district. In other words, when we send that information home to parents, the permission slip, we need to get it back from them, saying that, yes, I agree to have my student participate. And they have some rights. They have the right to review materials in advance, the right to observe instruction, and to excuse their child without penalty. So we always have a couple, usually each year, at least at the high school we did. We'd have to give them alternate assignments. Obviously, their grade could not be impacted negatively by not participating. And we send those letters home at all the different levels, so parents are well-informed throughout the process. Some of the required content. It is required that we do an abstinence-based program, and that abstinence is the only 100% effective method against unplanned pregnancy, sexually transmitted diseases, HIV, and AIDS. They must be age-appropriate and medically accurate. That's one of the main jobs of the Advisory Board, obviously, to review this curriculum, the videos we show, and make sure it's accurate for the age group. Discuss the benefits of abstinence, and include the possible emotional, economical, and legal consequences of sex, and then teaching the refusal skills to resist persistent pressure is all part of our programming. Some required content continued. Teachers, or, excuse me, that students have the power to control their personal behavior, provide instruction on what healthy relationships, and how to set limits, and recognize a dangerous environment, and then include information on the legal age of consent and consequences of underage sex. So I know this one has got a lot of information on it, but it's important for us to recognize that our instruction is age-appropriate, and it aligns with the Michigan health standards. All of the things that are in the legislative guidelines, we've made sure we've met those as well, and that's part of this presentation tonight. We also want to emphasize that we use the Michigan model. It's aligned with the legislative requirements, receives legislative updates, and we communicate, and those are communicated out by our regional coordinator, Tracy Robinson. It's a network of schools and health coordinators at 25 regional sites across Michigan to provide the schools with training, professional development, and resources. So we work closely. I actually went to a training, one of my first, actually, I think it might have been my first training on the job, was about the Sex Ed Advisory Board to learn more about this. So Tracy Robinson and I are in constant communication, and our instruction is based off of the Michigan model, which was previously approved by the school board. And so we wanted to give you just a little bit of a breakdown as far as the different instruction that takes place at the different grade levels. So fourth grade, it's more, more about the immune system. We watch Inside, it's an Inside Ralphie video. Boys and girls are instructed separately, and it takes about two class periods to cover that content. Fifth and sixth grade, again, defining HIV, provide puberty instruction. Girls and boys are instructed separately, and this is usually covered in one lesson. And then eighth grade, it's more instruction on HIV, STI, sex education. It's a coed class, so boys and girls together, and this one is a shortened version of the high school, around 11 lessons. And then our current high school health class, similar to the middle school instruction on HIV, STIs, coed, and it's a little longer, 18 lessons, and includes a variety of lecture discussion and videos. So at the meeting, there were basically three things that the committee or the Advisory Board really talked about. One, some of our videos, you know, start to get a little outdated after, after a few years, and so we wanted to take a look, and so we worked with Tracy Robinson to see if we had more updated videos, you know, without, obviously, you know, decades' hair and dress and those kind of things, and kids start to pick up on those things. And we reviewed some of the videos, but we felt that the content in the current videos was better, so our recommendation for now is to keep those videos, the one, basically using the ones we have, continue to see what's out there, but for now, to keep what we have. And then there's also a MiFi survey. So this, the committee wanted to know more about this survey. It's given to students in seventh, ninth, and 11th grade. It's an optional anonymous survey that curlocks data on a variety of health topics. So we are in the process of gathering some more information on that. We actually looked at St. Clair County's results, and so it's something, it's a, this is not a MiFi survey year, so it's not something we have to decide right now, but we're gathering more information to see if we want to participate in future years. And then the one that the Advisory Board brought up that actually is a good suggestion, but did provide a few logistical challenges we had to investigate before, we could take it back to the Advisory Board, have them approve it, and then obviously bring it to you guys tonight. The one recommendation is that we move our current ninth-grade health class to eighth grade. So the main reason was to have students get this information earlier in life. We know that, you know, sex appeal and those topics and the exposure is much more, students are receiving at a younger and younger age. So that was the main basis behind this, let's get them the information earlier. However, with the recommendation like this, there are some logistical challenges, right? We have to be able to, next year, teach health at the high school for current eighth graders that didn't get it, and we also have to then teach it to the current seventh graders moving to eighth grade. So there's a staffing concern, some logistical things that we needed to work through. And so we were able to, working with Ms. Burns and Mr. Robbins, they were in favor of the move as well. We believe we have the staffing to be able to make that work starting next school year. There was some discussion with the committee about maybe waiting another year, but we think we're able to pull that off next year. And as our, with the personal finance credit coming in soon as well, you know, those elective spots for high school students continue to get eaten up, and so we wanted, this would also provide incoming freshmen with another open elective slot, bumping that from their ninth-grade year down to their eighth-grade year. So that recommendation was voted on and approved by the Sex Ed Advisory Committee. At this time, we ask you to consider the recommendation at this Board meeting, and then we'll ask you to take action to either approve or reject this recommendation at the April Board meeting. So this is basically presenting first reading type of situation. And this is just some additional resources as far as the Michigan model, HIV trends in Michigan, and then health statistics as far as STDs. Any questions?
What's the instruction that you're moving to the ninth to the eighth grade?
It's our full Sex Ed unit. So instead of an eighth grader receiving the 11 lessons, they would receive the full high school health, sex education lesson. So it'd be the full 18 lessons.
What is the goal? What is the goal for the ninth to the eighth? Why? You said that it's, they need to have those options earlier in life.
Yeah, that was the, with the Advisory Board, that was what we discussed as far as...
What does it cover?
It covers...
Like, what are the lessons?
Yeah, it covers, I mean, it's an abstinence-based program, and it covers the refusal skills, it covers the STIs, it covers the, you know, the legalities of sex as far as the age. I mean, it covers our full...
That's what the current ninth-grade one is? The lesson plan that you're moving to the eighth grade?
Correct. It'd be the full sex education unit. The eighth grade gets a shortened version right now.
So there's, I guess, there's 18 lessons in the high school, right?
Correct.
Is that what you're moving completely into the eighth grade now?
Yes.
There's going to be any more high school instruction at all?
We're...
They'll be done by the time they get to ninth grade?
Yes, they would be done. The only thing we would be required to do that will probably work into biology class is because they entered that new building, we would be required to provide the HIV training, which we would probably work into the biology class. And we've talked about, a previous district I worked in, we came, we had a, the prosecutor actually came in and talked about the legalities of sex. So we, we could look at bringing, because that was brought up by the committee, how do we add something back at the high school level? Other questions?
Thanks, Kyle. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And then next is the discussion on the Board Policy and Limits for Spending. It had been asked if we could table this meeting so that Russ was here and John was here. Anybody? We should vote on that, right? Daphne? Yep.
My opinion would be for support.
Dennis and Mike? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And last is to adjourn. Entertain a motion?
So move order.
Mike and Dennis, all those in favor say aye. Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Daphne does need these back.